All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
So.
So.
I can't bring out.
Right. All right, we'll call a meeting to order. We have a shared vision in the Ferner School District, provide excellent for every student so that each will reach their greatest potential. We're always happy to have parents and other community members at our meetings. Thank you to the members of the public who have joined us. As a reminder, school board meetings and work sessions. Our meetings of the board held in public, providing an opportunity to observe the board's discussions and actions in an effort to conduct official board business. We ask that the audience be respectful and refrain from questions, comments, and unnecessary noise while the board conducts the meeting. There's an opportunity for citizen comment tonight, and the board looks forward to hearing from those who signed up. And we'll carry some reminders when we get to that portion of the meeting. Also, please note that all board meetings are live streamed and posted on the school board area of the district websites. So first off, we plead in pride for the. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. All right, we do have some public comments tonight. The Ferner School Board encourages public input. A person wanting to provide public comment will need to plead and submit and intend to speak for him to the board secretary by 1:00 PM on the day of the board meeting. Public comment is limited to the place, to this place on the agenda, not to exceed a total of 30 minutes for all commenters. A person giving public comment is limited, limited to an established time limit of three minutes while speakers may during public meeting. Offer objective criticism of school operations and programs. The board will not hear personal complaints concerning district personnel or against any person connected with the school system. Please state your name and address. If speaking for an organization, state the name of the organization. The board reserves the right to refer the matter to the administration. So first up, we have Felicia Johnson. Whatever you'd like to do, however you're comfortable.
My name is Felicia Johnson, and I live on Central Road. My son is a sixth grader. Last Monday, an eighth grade student repeatedly shoved, cursed, and called a sixth grader names during an open gym at Fernridge Middle School despite several attempts to walk away. When the behavior was reported, the staff member said this is normal behavior for this eighth grader. Two days later, the same eighth grader displayed similar behavior to a group of fellow eighth graders. This time, he stated, I'm going to shoot this place up tomorrow and pointed a gun finger at a girl's head and said, you'll be the first. This incident was not reported by staff members. However, an incident like this who involves a student who is known for aggressive and abusive behavior, how can this happen without a staff member knowing? Luckily, four member, four mothers did report this incident in person to the district office and will turn, will talk, were told. The video footage would be reviewed with a two-day suspension and an investigation by a district psychologist. I question why the police not notified. Our children deserve better. Furthermore, there has been zero communication to parents about this threat. Parents have been robbed of the opportunity to take safety and security decisions in their own hands for their own children. These statements cannot be taken like heartedly. And by doing so, you are making a dangerous and deadly assumption that students will not follow through on these threats. When local high schools receive threats, they are followed by immediate district and police responses as well as family notification. Why are we not being notified the same way? There is thought that protecting the anonymity of the aggressor warrants the lack of notification. This is misguided. The aggressor can remain unnamed and still alert parents of a threat and reassure them of the steps that you are taking to protect our children. All children need to be protected. With no additional precautions being taken at the school, my sixth grader research received a crash course on what to do if a school shooting scenario happens. This conversation scared him, but he asked questions like, exactly what do I say to the police? And what do I do for my friends to keep them safe? In this moment, my 11-year-old child cared more about his classmates than the school or district did. This is the problem. Every child in this district deserves to feel safe at school. And every parent deserves to know exactly what is happening in their child's school and how staff members are being communicated with and trained to deal with these situations. The aggressors cannot be protected more than every other child. I have 30 more seconds. Can I finish or no? In the events of September 11 and 13 show us that there are warning signs being displayed within the halls of Fernridge Middle School that are either being ignored or not recognized, and this needs to be addressed. There are free government grants designed to make schools safer, such as the Greenlight Initiative, which I implore you to please research and take advantage of. They are 100% free. In closing, I ask, how is this board protecting every child in the district? We are entrusting our children to you, and their safety needs to be your number one priority.
Right. Next up is Jessica.
I do have a couple of questions on how we chose the kids to run the board. I think it's a phenomenal decision. I think we need to get our kids involved here. Um, I personally like bringing that out. I think it shows for a lot who's doing this for the kids. And that's what she time and time. I thank you guys for the time you give. And I think you always see it that we're attacking you. Andrea came up to me at the last meeting, and I know she feels that way. I'm sure Gary's felt that way in the many phone calls he made to him. I'm not attacking you. I'm voicing it, my opinion. I'm voicing things people are ready to make. I'm trying to do what's best for our schools. It's not always, I'm not right, but after this thing too, the September 11th, 11th work session, the one thing that stood out to me that both Eric and Mark know of is the public's game of can't speak, the public can't ask questions. This is not a meeting with them. This is our board meeting. That's troublesome to me. You should want us to ask questions. You should want to know how we feel. You should want to share those things with us. We're not trying to be disruptive. There are times we just want clarification. Um, I think if we had a better working relationship, it would improve immensely of us not gonna like, we have to come here to complain. If I felt like in the middle of something and could be approached or could get an answer, it would be different. Um, I would like to know how the kids are chosen on the board. Is that something kids apply for? I would think of student body presidents, but that wasn't all clear to me. I would also like some clarification. April's meeting of last year, Andrea, you guys voted to for the ODE funds for after Andrea, after it was approved, had one asked, said, we're approving it based on clarification on, we want to see what's sent into ODE, what they're actually doing for all those rooms. And I, I'm not looking in the right spot. I would like to see that for, know how you can go and see that. So we can see what you guys are doing because you are doing great things. And the kids do appreciate it, but that would help us to see. Oh, this is where they're putting this money. This is where it's going. Because sometimes those things we don't understand. When you spend $100,000 on windows, we don't realize those windows back with it. So that would be nice to know. I have 38 seconds left. If anybody else has something they'd like, they, you know, signed up, you're welcome.
Um, so just in response, Michelle Marshall provided us with that information and she can. I think it, is it on the website or not?
It is. Not that list in particular, but I can definitely do something the next one. I'm ready to email you. I just wasn't sure exactly how to go about it. And that's it. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Jennifer.
Good evening.
Please don't speak in Spanish.
My name is Jennifer, and I am Fernridge Educational Association president. And I just kind of wanted to introduce myself because this is my first year as president, and I've taken on a lot of different roles throughout my time. And I just wanted to talk about, I mean, you've seen the mission statement, but what PRIA stands for. We stand for students first. We look at the academic, the social, emotional, physical safety, and the whole child. We focus on families, not just everybody in the district, but including our own. We focus on wellness and wellbeing because that is super important professional development. And I would like to thank the opportunities we have during the in-service week to learn about, you know, the social, emotional learning aspect. Positive communication, which just makes things a lot easier, and just building camaraderie and community. So those are kind of the things that PRIA stands for. And along with the mission statement, um, the three pillars that I know Michelle Marshall has talked about in the past, building relationships. And from my perspective, um, it's important to ask students how they're doing. How was our weekend? How was your game last night? Rager, I teach College Now classes. I just had students all get fours on the AP Spanish test when I don't even have those AP Core relevance. I take the cultural readings that we do in school. I took them on a tempers field trip, and I just think all of those are important. And I see a lot of our teachers doing that throughout each. And then I just wanted to have a few thank yous. I would like to thank the school board for their constant support and dedication for all the work that they've done. And I would like to thank the district office and the leaders. We've had a terrific rapport. We've done so many memorandums, I can't even count anymore. Problem solving, and I can tell you when I go to the locals, the meetings with all the other locals like Crestfall, Cottage Road, it's not always the case. And I just feel really thankful that we have positive communication and have just done a really excellent job and working well together. And then just a couple of upcoming events that I wanted to bring up. I know some of them are on the agenda. But the upcoming open houses at the elementary is on September 28th, middle schools on September 21st, so this Thursday. The high school will be on October 2nd, and the high school is also doing a blood drive on October 12th, which I don't think is on the agenda, but you can get a $15 Amazon gift card if you are interested in doing that. And I know more info will come out on Parents' Square. And then homecoming is the week of October 16th, which is also when conferences are taking place. So kind of a lot going on, but very exciting stuff. And just thank you all for doing the work.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to approval of minutes, both the August 21st and September 11th.
Michelle, there's a typo somewhere in, in the regular meeting. But can I just email it to you? Because it's really simple.
So these require board action.
I move that we approve the, the minutes as written, except for the one small typo that I found. Which is missing a V or.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept the August 21st and September 11th minutes with the the one typo that will be corrected. Any other discussion? Here, none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries three to zero. All right, um, next up is business office. So enrollments report.
I'm here, yes.
You're up.
Yep, I'm just waiting for the enrollment report to pop up. All right, there it is. All right, these are our enrollment numbers as of the first day of school, September 5th. Um, overall, we are down 32 students from our projected budget. Where those decreases are at is 39 at the elementary level, one at the middle school, and then we're up eight at the high school to make that 32. Um, we are up 26 students from the end of the last school year. So that's a good thing. Um, that Elmira Elementary is sitting around a class size of 22.42, Vanita at 23.43. Do you, does the board have any questions on the enrollment report?
Not at this time.
Thank you. No?
All right, this is the general fund and revenue expenditure report as of August 31st. We've received 22% of our revenue. Um, that's 5% higher than last year. But that is due to that large timber revenue we received in July. Um, we have spent 6% of our operating expenditures. Uh, this time last year, we were at 5%, so very close. Um, other than that, not a whole lot's happening. It's just the beginning of the year. Next year, or next month, the numbers will go up quite a bit because we will have processed our first payroll for the year, our large payroll for the year. And does the board have any questions on that?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Yep.
So Gavin, please speak up if you have any questions. Just I. I move that we approve the general fund's revenue and expenditures for August 31st, 2023.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the general fund revenue expenditure for August 31st, 2023. Any, um, any discussion? Here, none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries three to zero. All right, Gavin, this would be your time. You already told me you don't have anything to report. I know it's pretty early in school, so we're hoping that next month that you and Tristam will have something to. Thank, thank you for seeing here. I appreciate it. Uh, next up is Ms. Ms. Marshall with an update.
Okay, um, I just have a couple of things. I looked at, I thank you guys for my September update and then just were things to maybe let you know that I didn't include that today. The longitudinal performance growth targets. I didn't get any questions from that presentation last month. So I'm hoping that if you have any questions, get back to me. Um, but the next steps for that, we're waiting for ODE's grant agreement. And then what will happen is I'll post the grant agreement and all those targets for website, which my office, the past committee and Bud. Um, and then we'll, we'll give them that time, and then it'll come to you guys for a referral. It's all the same stuff. It's just a little. Um, but OD can't tell us when that's happening. They keep, in the coming months, they're what they say. Um, the next thing that I want you to know is that it's a science adoption year, so K-12 will be working on that for about the next six months. And then probably May, off of the board, but before then, it'll be pushed out to like our top two choices, kind of like what we've done the last couple of years with math and ELA. Top two choices, um, it'll be on display here in the boardroom if people want to come in and see it. Uh, there will be presentations. There will be staff input, community input. So that will be coming. And then another thing that's coming along, K-5, Oregon Response to Instruction and Intervention, or Oregon RTI. Um, our district implementation launch team starts the 26th. So that's really exciting. It's something that the district did probably 15 years ago, and it's the focus is K-5 reading instruction and intervention. And both of our eleventries are Title I schools. We've got a new ELA from last year, just really focusing on how to make the instruction the best it can be. How do you use data? How do you use support cycles for students? And then what do you do when kids are learning? Uh, the last thing I would share is that we have two new district tag coordinators. I think maybe Mr. Kurtner has mentioned this, but K-5 is Fred Connelly. She's a Vanita elementary kindergarten teacher. And then 612 is River Harvey. She's a middle school ELA teacher. So I'll meet with them monthly with Ms. Clings Warren to kind of help them learn all about Fernridge tag procedures, protocols, or plan. And just get them on board and all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendents repair.
Three things to touch on. One, our facility survey was last night. Scott Rose will compile that stuff. I'll get you the data. Uh, I think there was 178 responses. Um, he will take that feedback, look at the scope of the plan that the community group came up with, the community staff group, 24 sort of was met. Maybe make some recommendations based on that feedback of small changes. Uh, we'll share it out with the committee, get their support, and then I would expect, uh, the October 16th meeting. We will talk about any adjustment to the plan. A second survey will go out. It'll be more detailed in kind of response to that. And then, um, in November, uh, that's when you'll start to need to have discussions around are we thinking you want to go out for a bond or not? One of the critical things I think will be this OSCIM grant, Awesome Grant, that opens December of 15th. We can buy that day. I've done all the elements that allow us to be eligible for that grant. So we're an eligible school district to apply. We should buy that within a few days, but that's a big deal because that would be $6 million, $3 to the district. Taxpayer funded. Just from their overall, uh, OD has a, it's around $200 million. They go out to districts that apply and can get rewarded. So that would be really important to our plan because to keep our tax rate out here the same, about $2.20, the district that afforded to up were $12 million. I think 12 million's a lot. When you start building facilities, it goes fast. So that extra $6 million is literally a, you know, 50% of free money. That'll really change the scope of what we can do. So, uh, probably my recommendation is going to be to wait till after December 15th. Did we get that? Did we not? Then have that discussion in January with board with side. Okay, we got it. We're going out. We didn't get it. We didn't adjust our plan. We don't want to go out. But that's when we need to make the decision. So that's just kind of the timeline. Like I said, I'll get you that data on the survey here in a few days. Reminder that Division 22 will be on the October agenda. That's the 50 or 60 elements I need to review and report on. We were in compliance for last year. Started that. We're on track. Uh, and then the last thing I wanted to mention is something I start usually in July is updating our website here in current year. So it's fully updated now. Will I challenge you to find this case? I'm sure you'll find some. Reach out when you do and all. Lots of updates and changes from names, people in new roles to all of our reports that were due to be reviewed or updated. Hopefully, all that is done now. Uh, so again, if you have a chance to look through it, if you find anything missing or an error, please. That's all right.
Okay, so my first question, in regards to the survey, we have 178 people respond to that. What is the average number of people that respond usually to these surveys?
I'll ask Scott specifically in his email to me today. Uh, he said, based on our size, he thought that was pretty normal. Um, he did, he had some percent in there. I don't remember off the top of my head, but I'll forward you what he said about the response.
And then the other thing is, um, I know that will jump up still with the asking, okay, is the topics for the bond? When will that be to live by?
Well, it was presented to you as a plan when he came. Um, and so now, what I understand, he wants to take the feedback from this group, which based on the feedback, again, just with my initial look, over the 178 people that responded, the vast majority of them um, identified athletics and athletic facilities as a need. So, for example, in our initial grant, um, in our initial bond proposal, we really only talked about going out for a multi-use athletic facility if we got the Awesome Grant. Because that'll be around $6 million alone, just a standalone facility, and that would kind of fit. $12 million taxpayer funded, new educational spaces from payback to parking lots to whatever. So when on the 16th, I think you'll get, see another wrath of that if there's been any of this. If not, for sure in November, but, um, the current plans you should have, uh, the breakdown price of everything, these numbers and what the committee elected they wanted to, uh, to fund.
Yep. All right, that's it. Is that what you have discovered?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to board goals. We did have a work session on the 11th last Monday where we had all five members present. They, we did come to a consensus as a board, um, and agreed on these three goals for the board for this 2223 school year. Yeah, I think comments on the. You can, one moment discuss or no?
A lot of discussion.
Yeah. All right. So we do, we would like to take board action on this. So.
I would, um, state to go ahead and prove the 2324 Fernridge board goals, please.
I have a second.
We have a motion to approve the 2324 Fernridge board goals. And a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries three to zero. So we have a second reading for these four, um, policies. Most of the, all the language was legislated language, which we're going to be getting numerous months of those since we just had an end of a legislation disclosed last spring and um, so we get a whole bunch more. They're just taking, it's taken OSPA time to go through those and get those updated. So but this is a second reading that we do need board action on these four.
I move that we, uh, approve the four admin, policies and administrative rules, sorry, um, that are listed. admin, policies and administrative rules, sorry, that are listed. I'll go ahead and say.
We have a motion to approve the four policies that have been, that are presented for a second reading. And a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Okay, next up is Oregon School Board Association nominees. Is there anyone here who would like to be nominated for the Oregon School Board? Well, there's a, OSBA has a board of directors. Is there anyone that would like to be nominated for that? Yeah. I tried before. Not gonna drag in, I'm too busy. All right, so we have no nominations. We will be voting on that, I believe, probably next month, but I'm not sure when it is. They'll talk more about it tomorrow night at the listening session. At ESD. So next up is staff exit interviews. This was asked by one of the board members to put on the agenda and Mr. Carpenter is going to talk about that since that's.
Yeah, so it's not something we've done, ran by the administrators, everybody's open to that idea. I reached out to Lake County School Districts, so 17 in Lake County, 16 ESD. See how many did that and there were four. However, there were also another four that were kind of in our vote that we're looking to start in this year. So by the end of this year, it could be over half of Lake County School Districts. The feedback I got or ideas, I have a document where I took a bunch of notes. Essentially, folks that have a hard time getting people to complete them. They give them various avenues. So electronic is the most common one. And then they give them very, various avenues of folks to, if they don't want to do electronic and they want to do it in person, they give them a range of folks they could do it in person with, their direct supervisor, to building principal, superintendent, maybe director of K-12 programs, but it's not this you have to do with this person. And then the other strategy they used was having a, in a couple of districts, we're having a Chromebook just in the business office, for example, Michelle Smith's desk in the admin office. When they come in to turn in their keys and bags, you can ask them, hey, did you have a chance to do the exit survey? Oh, no. Well, here it is. Take three minutes to do this. So my thought would be, A, having, you know, in general, everyone in the district is in support of it over the next few months. Two districts shared with me what they use, Springfield and Saisla, two of the ones that currently do them. So I'll kind of take what I think is the best of both of those. I'll get something together. I would imagine certainly by the end of the year, when most folks are leaving, you'd have something in place if that's what it wants to do. So it's on my to-do list.
It's really your decision. I mean, I think it's really your decision if you want to go through the time moving since.
Looking into it, I'm in support of it. Enter that framework. I know Lisa asked about school board members collecting exit interviews. I sent you what OSBA does. I don't think that would be best practice. I do think it would be best practice to report to the school board kind of summary data once a year. So we'll pick a time, maybe like August or September, where we'll compile. You know, there's like rating scales or whatever. We'll compile that data and share it with the board at least once a year. I'll look into it, get a plan in place and hopefully in a few months, maybe share a graph with you with that.
Great. Thank you.
So would you, although people who are retiring are, the reason for leaving is pretty obvious, but maybe they might have some suggestions or, you know.
They don't have to be sections on, what is your favorite part of Dr. Ridge or your job or what you liked? What were the things you didn't like? Carries for improvement, whatever. There'll be a broad range of things to ask for you.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
All right, moving on to personnel. We can have one person to add. Is that right?
Yes, we need to add the hiring of Jeremy Yarborough. He's a 10100 faculty teacher at Elmira Elementary.
Great, so these are the other retire, retirement resignations and hirings that require board action, including Jeremy, Mr. Yarborough.
I, I moved that we with a very sad heart, accept the retirement of both Forrest Cooper and Mr. Johnson, David Johnson. And because they are both amazing teachers. And also the resignation of James Story and the hiring of all those listed, as well as the one that you added.
All right, so we have a motion. I'm not going to repeat it exactly, but we have a motion for the licensed employee resignation, new hires and transfers, including the person that we added. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Yes. Maybe they'll work back. We'll see. Sure.
So as far as staff is concerned, are we, we have everybody now?
We have everybody. We never really have everybody. Teachers.
Typically.
Yeah, we have one open certified job, which is a school psychologist. They've been open for multiple years. That's what I'm trying to solve with an intern I've talked to you about. I'm going to meet you about interns here in a month or so. So the certified side, I think we're set for the year. On the contract side, we still have a couple of instructional assistant positions. And now, you know, one of our biggest jobs, Mr. Story, as I shared with you, when he, he's new to us, he's been doing a fantastic job. When he applied with us, he also applied for what he told me was his dream job. And they were kind of on hold for three or four months and they called him an offer in that. And he reluctantly has resigned. So that will be a very important job for us to build in the next three weeks. He's, he knows it's a burden and leaving, he's given us 60 days. So my hope is if you get somebody on within the next 30, be able to work with him for 30 days to easily transition. I would say that's our biggest, as far as an open position. Yeah, we have a couple of qualified jobs, instructional assistants, any parents want to be an instructional assistant at school, come on in. But that may be a job we're going to need to fill.
And while I am very sad to see him go, you have to, he has to follow his dream job.
All right, so then we do have, just for information, the non-licensed personnel report also with some resignations and hirings of votes. Those are them. All right, moving on to any late items or closing comments.
I would, I would like to just read a statement. So at last week's work session, Director Pizzola reminded us that "The board should strive for open and kind communication with each other. And after some soul searching, I believe that I could do a better job of this. I believe that I could also be, at times be more patient and gracious with some members of the audience. I therefore wish to apologize to anyone who has felt that I have not been kind or gracious in my responses and thank Director Grant Adams in particular for modeling gracious communication." As some of you are aware, I had a particularly negative interaction with a member of the audience at last, after last month's meeting. And I would again like to express my gratitude to building staff and administrators who reached out to express their support and appreciation. What I was trying to explain to this individual was that their negative interruptions were a distraction to me and that I was therefore not hearing anything other than their negative tone because I was working so hard to focus on what I was trying to say. I left the meeting feeling like I had failed to communicate this, but apparently they at least heard some of what I was trying to express. And I would like to express my appreciation to all of you for the respectful and patient, sorry. That for the respectful and patient process that you have undergone tonight. And hope that we can continue to focus on our shared objective of providing every student with the opportunity to meet their greatest potential moving forward. While we may have different perspectives, I hope that we can learn from each other through positive constructive interactions. I can only speak for myself at this time, but at the beginning of the agenda, there are two statements. The Fern Ridge School Board encourages public input. And we are always happy to have parents and other community members at our meetings. And I want you all to know that when presented in a constructive way, I want to hear all perspectives so that we can work together to make the schools places where everyone feels welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll thank Gavin for coming. It's the first meeting, nine more to go, buddy.
Any other later closing items? As far as, as far as upcoming events, we do have things on the agenda. At the high school, we have Spirit Day, Blue and Gold, September 27th, open house. The 28th, like that was mentioned, Pitcher Day is 28th, no school on October 13th. At Vanita Elementary School, we have Pitcher Day on the 21st, Obab on the 22nd, open house on the 28th. Al's meeting on the 4th, October 4th. Lions Vision Screening, October 6th, artists and residents, they're doing tie dye, it sounds like fun, on October 9th and 27th. And then no school also on, there was no school in the district on the 13th. Burnbridge Middle School, open house on the 21st, 7th grade volleyball, September 18th, 8th grade volleyball on the 20th. Elmira High School, girls soccer versus the Pine on September 19th, volleyball versus Saisla on the 19th. Football versus Crestwell on the 22nd. Boys soccer versus the Pine on September 28th, open house on October 2nd. And then homecoming week is October 16th through 20th. Hearing no objections, we will adjourn for the night.